Okay, good afternoon. Welcome everyone to the October 21st City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission Meeting. We will call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum today. If I could quickly just, since we have a full quorum again, if I could say welcome to Sean Wright, our newest member of the city councils and also is going to be serving on our planning commission. Shall we continue? But welcome, we're glad to have you. After the determination of quorum, I'm supposed to read the consent agenda. Started on that, what do you think? Okay, we are going to read the consent agenda. We will start out, item A is Salem Creek, Section 8, preliminary plat for 48 lots on approximately 25.95 acres, zoned RS10, located along Shady Forest Drive. Salem Creek Partnership is the developer. Item B is Shelton Square, Section 5, a preliminary plat for 46 lots on 12.6 acres, zoned PRD, located along Bridgemore Boulevard. Shelton Square LLC is the developer. Item C is Carlton Landing, Section 1, Phase 2, final plat for 25 lots on 23.6 acres, zoned RS10, located west of New Salem Highway. Cornerstone Development LLC is the developer. Item D is Walmart Supercenter, resubdivision of Lot 3, final plat for two lots on 4.45 acres, zoned Commercial Highway, located along Shelbyville Pike and Tiger Hill. Race Track Petroleum Inc. is the developer. Item E has been withdrawn from the consent agenda for today. Item F is Buchanan Estate, Section 8, Phase 2, final plat for 46 lots on 22.5 acres, zoned RM in unincorporated Rutherford County, and served as an outside the city sewer customer, located along Ronstadt Drive, Jones Construction Company developer. Item G is Manny Station, final plat for one lot on 0.47 acres, zoned PUD, located along South Manny Avenue. Brett Kelton is the developer. Item H is Greenberg, final plat for two lots on 0.54 acres, zoned RS8 and CCO, developer. Item I is Valley Farms, Section 2, final plat for 32 lots on 6.5 acres, zoned PUD, in unincorporated Rutherford County, and served as an outside the city sewer customer, located along Pinion Street and Red Barn Road. Valley Farms Group LLC is the developer. Item J is Oakland Court, Phase 2, site plan for 74 multifamily dwelling units on 10.07 acres, zoned PRD and CCO, located along North Academy Street and East Embry Street. Murfreesboro Housing Authority developer. Item K is Autumn Plaza, Sites 2 and 3, site plan for 55,059 square foot senior apartment building, and a 66,925 square foot assisted living facility on 4.1 acres, zoned PUD, located along Old Port Parkway and Autumn Town Way. Autumn Plaza Partners developer. And item L, mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of an existing drain adjustment located within the Pocket Creek Station subdivision along Cedar Glades Drive. Mr. Matt Taylor on behalf of Regionwood LLC is the applicant. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like removed for further discussion? Not, we're ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, next is our gateway design overlay. We have two items here today. First one is the commons at the gateway, Valvoline, final design and site plan review for 2,078 square foot motor vehicle services on 14.8 acres. Zoned MU and GDO1, located along Medical Center Parkway. Valvoline instant oil change is the developer. Hello, Ms. Green, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was hoping I was exempt from the echo bonus. The first item under the gateway portion of our agenda is for you to consider construction of a new motor vehicle service facility.
This property is located on the north side of Medical Center Parkway, adjacent to a commercial strip center, which has a firehouse sub and a Walgreens. And on the opposite side is a retail building that we call the L-shaped building, or Walmart property L-shaped building, and you may be familiar with that. This disturbed area is a 2.7 acre portion of a larger property. The overall master plan property is 14.8 acres, and the developers opted to, in lieu of creating lot lines, do lease lines for most of the development. So all the development is on one lot, with the exception of a bank, which is an out parcel. So the lack of the property lines by creating lease lines means that some of our development standards that you would ordinarily see in the gateway design overlay district between commercial developments, they didn't need to design to those. For example, we have a requirement that the parking lot and the adjacent property line need to be 15 feet from each other. So 15 feet on either side is a total of 30 feet. You don't see this on the site plan because there's no actual property line between this Valvoline and the adjacent L-shaped building, or the apartments to the north. So I just wanted to point it out to you why it was different. We would not allow them to come in in the future and add a property line here without going in and redoing the site to meet those minimum standards. This is something that we dealt with. Usually we advise against it because inevitably people like to sell off out parcels. And so we ask that you design your plan to meet all the standards. But in this case, they could demonstrate that they had a strong ownership regime, and so that's why we're considering the lease lines at this time. So when you look at this property, that is a large reason why the buildings are closer to each other than we might normally see. There's also, not shown on the screen now, but there's also a significant TVA easement that runs across the property, which very strongly dictates what can be constructed underneath that easement. It is a regulated line, so it's highly regulated by TVA. Essentially, they don't allow structures of most kinds beneath it. They allow parking, they allow drainage, but they would not allow, say, a dumpster enclosure or a building, or a shade tree, as we would ordinarily require in parking lots. So when we look at these plans, you'll see that there's some places where you would expect to see a shade tree in the parking lot. It's not located there, and that's because it's in the TVA easement.
I'm going to interrupt just one second. If the folks that are on, joining us by Zoom could mute their Zoom, I think that will eliminate any remnants of the echo that we have. Thank you.
Good. I knew it couldn't have been powerful. So when you look at the plan, that's why you see some of those shade trees missing. It's because it's a regulated TVA line, and of course, safety is very important to our community. You did see this building last month for initial design review, where the focus was on architecture. There wasn't a lot of comment at that time. I did, the changes from that submitted to this middle include, I had them go through and add that masonry base along the building where it was missing. And so you may or may not have noticed last time. I think the meeting got a little longer than we were expecting before, and so we didn't maybe spend as much time on these elements. But I knew that that would be something that you would bring up at final design review if you didn't catch it initial, so they were able to address that. I think they've also improved the building by adding some spandrel glass faux windows to the second story. Before, it was brick on the first story, and entirely ephesus on the top. They've added some brick columns on the ends and the spandrel glass, and so I think that that's been an improvement to this design. So that is what's different to the building since the time you saw it last. They've also added some architectural lighting with some goose neck fixtures. So before you now is the master plan for the development. And this master plan actually does show that significant TVA easement along the property. The site is located just here, and you can see that the setback for the building, it's further to the back than the other buildings. Generally, we like them to line up, but in this case, they couldn't put that building in the TVA easement. This overall project is 14.8 acres, so they were required to design formal open space. Sometimes on these small lots, if they're under our acreage or square footage requirement, we don't require them in the gateway. But here, it is a larger lot, and so what they were able to do is do an enhanced walkway from the serpentine sidewalks along Medical Center Parkway into the site. And staying out of the TVA easement, some decorative seat walls and some lighting and some decorative pavement sidewalks and additional landscaping outside that TVA easement. And so they were able to design a space that exceeds our size requirements. And I noted in our comments that sometimes we expect some additional elements in our formal open space, maybe some shade structures, gazebo's, arbors, shaded seating areas. But in this case, we were slightly more flexible because of that TVA easement. You're really limited on what you can do, and so what we're presenting to you is a little bit different. But I don't think it's so far out of what we've approved in the past that I wanted to bring it to your attention. I just did want to mention it's a little different because we considered the site constraints and how unique this property is. The comment that I wanted to point out to you, and just make sure that the applicant has an opportunity to speak to, is one regarding additional buffering. I've gone back to the master plan, and I'm pointing to the location, the dark gray of the Valvoline. Because there are no property lines, and this isn't a public driveway, it's a private drive along the rear property line. The setback for this apartment building is very close to the street. I think that was something we liked because it created a streetscape and like a, I think, more traditional walkable neighborhood. What I asked them to do was to look at the interface between the back of this building, which is oil change and their property line, to see if there was anything they could do to make sure they weren't disrupting the quality of life for the people who live in the apartments. I'm specifically concerned about noise. I've heard some testimony from the Chamber of Commerce that they can hear the tire change facility next door. I don't think that this particular use has the same noise, but say it were to change uses in the future, and it would go from Valvoline to something else, we would want to make sure that we were thinking about the quality of life of the residents. And our zoning ordinance allows the planning commission to place additional restrictions if you think it's appropriate, or additional buffering for uses that might be incompatible. So I'm going to invite Mr. Taylor to, like, turn just a moment to tell you what he's done in that area to kind of mitigate that concern. Otherwise, they've been able to respond to our comments and address them. I would be comfortable with you, if you were comfortable today, recommending approval subject to all staff comments. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Ms. Green. Welcome, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Ms. Green. I was really looking forward to hearing myself over and over again, so disappointed. But I think Ms. Green did a good job going over any of the changes that we've had. I think we've done a good job trying to address the formal open space with the restrictions that we've got from the TVA easement. As far as the buffering to the north, I think that one thing that helps us versus some of the issues that the chamber has had is, one, we're not a tire changing place, we're changing fluids. And so you won't have the air wrench going. And two, our bays are not pointed toward those residents, they're pointed out to each side. And so any noise wouldn't be directly facing the residence to the north. And so I think that both of those items would help. The chamber gets the direct noise from those tunnels from the tire changing place next door. We have added hollies along that northern property line, or project perimeter, if you will, instead of property line. And so I think that will start to give some visual breakup through there, visual buffers as those develop and grow in the future. But I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions?
The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six to unmute. The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six to unmute.
Somebody on Zoom might have a question for you. Okay. Anything else then? Any further comment, Mr. Taylor?
The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six.
I've got nothing else to add.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Comments and questions from the planning commission?
So Margaret Ann, I'm sure we've heard of lease lines before. It's kind of a new term for me, though. So you made the comment that because this is such a, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but strong ownership regime, so are we saying that the lease lines are between the office building that's to the left of this buil- are we saying, or, I mean, I know who owns, who developed this property, but it sounds like there is some buffering in the back of this building, but we're saying there's no buffering on the side, right?
Mostly, I was talking about to the north, along the private access drive.
Uh huh.
So a lease line is basically a private agreement where you, who owns the property, make a deal privately to lease an area to somebody. Planning commission, city council, state law, we regulate to property lines. So unless there's a real property line created, we don't regulate to those. And so this is all, well, it's two lots of record. There's a bank here, and then this is all on another lot of record. And that was approved, of course, with the master plan and the preliminary plat. What I wanted on this master plan, you can see, the drive aisle is about 22 feet wide, and so this use is fairly close to this apartment building. So I wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with the treatments proposed by the applicant there because it is a mixed-use development of, not a vertical, but a horizontal mixed-use development. And I just wanted to make sure that I brought it up to you as an opportunity to opine upon it. You, I mean, you very well may be comfortable with it, or you may want additional treatments. I just thought that there's no change in zoning, so there's no buffering required by ordinance. There's no property line, so there's no additional setbacks required based on those property lines. What you have are two uses near each other on a master plan development. So the zoning ordinance says if you do have two uses that you believe are incompatible, and sometimes motor vehicle sales, or oftentimes motor vehicle sales in any type of residential are not compatible. So we look at that interface and making sure that what we, what treatments we see in that interface are sufficient to reduce the impact to those people. And so there are, that apartment is, I think it's three-story, it could be four-story. But, and there are balconies on the front, there are units there. So I just wanted to, as a matter of the site plan review today, point out to you that they are rather close. And are you comfortable with the treatment Mr. Taylor outlined?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll just say, I've never heard this lease lines before either. So it's basically like they've just, as if there was a lot line there, and somebody's going to lease a portion of this property, but as if it was Lot 2 instead of all Lot 1. They're going to Lot 1 and 2, and they'll lease Lot 1. Now they're just going to lease a portion of this whole thing that's out there based on some legal description that Mr. Taylor drew up for them.
I think that something that's probably the most similar to this is almost the entire avenue is set up this way. So all the restaurants, the only lot, I think there was two lots that got sold out there. One is where Culver's, and I think the other is maybe Starbucks and the mattress store. Never been there, so I don't know. But, so the rest of the center is set up exactly like this. So that's your most similar situation that you have there.
I guess they just didn't refer to it as leased lines back then, or that was so long ago, I just don't remember it now.
I'm sure your memory is much better than mine, but.
No, I doubt that, but thank you.
They are where I learned the term lease line, I hadn't heard it before. And there have been three owners in my career at the avenue, and when there are new owners, they always come in and look at the easiest way to make some money, which is to sell off out parcels. And we had Heinz who asked for the exact same thing, and now we have the new owners who approached us and said, we'd like to just sell off this as a parcel. And our response consistently is, if you created a separate lot of record, then the property needs to meet our minimum standards, which is going in and adding that 15 feet, 15 feet, so maybe taking out parking, putting in landscaping, irrigation. So then the costs, it's not as easy of a sell-off as they initially think when they first acquire the properties. And so that's what, it may not be a real term, but I learned it from avenues.
Well, we learn something new every day, so that's great. So this site that we're looking at has the L-shaped building, the Valvoline building that we're looking at on there, and then is that everything?
There's the L-shaped building, there's the Valvoline. There are 1, 2, 3, 4 apartment buildings and a three-story self-storage. And there's one property line that runs along the south side of the self-storage and the shared access drive. Initially, when this plan was presented to you, this is a bank, it's a credit union. I can't remember right now which credit union it is. But that was a part of this overall development, and the bank wanted to own their property. And early on, they were able to, before development happened, create this as a separate lot, although it's a part of this master plan development. So this entire development only has two lots.
Liberty, Liberty Financial.
Liberty, that's right, yes, sir.
So that's where our whole 14 acres is.
Yeah, that's why it's 14 acres, because it includes all those buildings on this one lot of record. And my point was that if you don't have those lot lines created with a subdivision plat, some of those design standards don't apply, so setbacks don't apply. Whereas if there was a lot line between this apartment and the Valvoline, there would be front setbacks that would push those buildings back. There's not one, so it doesn't apply. And then there are parking separations in the gateway that say that your parking has to have so much green space between the property lines. So those, we designed to property lines or lot lines in our zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations.
That, that drawing is, makes a lot of sense, and I can't get that drawing to stay on my, see that one here, so anyway, operator error again, so. What other, I had missed that one totally trying to scroll through here, so I get it now.
Otherwise, I think the plan is in relatively good order.
The main question is, are you all comfortable with the hollies, I guess, that have posed on the north lot line?
And I'll zoom in on the plan if you want to see it. I don't know if that helps you at all.
I'm comfortable with it. I think the building itself is pretty narrow back there. They've got the additional landscaping. It's also not against an adjacent parking area, so you don't see it, you know, that takes away from, or adds to the distraction of the view that the apartments would have.
And I'll comment as well. I think because the apartments are not complete, you know, that means something to me, too. It's not like we're adding, you know, that building there. And I don't know when this is supposed to break ground or those sorts of things, but I think probably the developer has more risk than maybe the tenant that's moving in there that may be choosing to move in there or can choose to leave. So that'd be my perspective.
And there was another comment about maybe something that would prohibit the change of use, perhaps, something that could potentially, no, we're not.
No. I just wanted to mention that I thought probably changing, oil change would have less of an impact, like noise creation than tires, based on pneumatic tools. But it could possibly change use. So I try not to think of just what the use, who the user is today because we, you know, we live with it for a long, long time.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments?
If none, I will move to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Item B is Pocket Creek Station Lot 5. Final design and site plan review for 6,103 square foot office on 0.83 acres, zoned CH and GDO1, located along Cedar Glades Drive. Regionwood LLC is the developer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our next application is for you to consider final design and site plan approval for Pocket Creek Station Lot 5. Pocket Creek Station is the commercial subdivision located along Fortress Boulevard and Manson Pike. To familiarize you or help you locate it, it's the property in the gateway across the interstate, as we say, that includes a Walmart Neighborhood Market, a car wash, a Sonic, and a Camino Real. There are, there's still quite a bit of vacant land here, and I think we're seeing development and will continue to see some proposals in the future for that. Lot 5 is directly adjacent to the Camino Real, which has frontage on Cedar Glades Drive. Cedar Glades Drive does connect to Manson Crossing Drive. Eventually, Manson Crossing Drive will continue to the north and connect into Manson Pike, which will give the residents who live in Pocket Creek Station and some of the other developments, residential developments, another way out without forcing them all to go onto Fortress Boulevard, which will be a positive. And so when you see future development, you will see the extension of Manson Crossing Drive. This lot, though, has frontage already created along a public right of way, so the lot is already created. As a matter of the consent agenda, there was an item for a mandatory referral for a drainage adjustment on this property. There's an easement that exists that has no infrastructure in it, and so staff in our public infrastructure and city engineer's office recommended that we do dispose of that easement. And so that was approved today under consent agenda was the easement along the rear of the property. That doesn't remove any requirements for buffering between this development and the adjacent multifamily community, and they are including that. The building has changed somewhat since you've seen it last, but probably not enough to really generate a lot of attention. We asked for clarification on the base material of this building before it was shown as a smooth face CMU, which is not a permitted material in the gateway. You can use as a secondary material, you can have integrally colored split face CMU, but no smooth face CMU. I think it was a matter of nomenclature. What they really have at the base is a simulated stone, a simulated smooth stone. And some of the images looked sort of like block, and the terminology called it block, so we just wanted to make sure that it was clear and clearly revised. And Mr. Taylor was able to get the architect to change that. Then we also asked for some additional detailing around some of the windows, seals and lintels, and, you know, not just punch-through style walls. And so they were able to do that. They've slightly increased some of the entrance features, the covered canopies, to meet our void requirement that's in the design guidelines. So the changes aren't significant, but there have been a few. The site plan is in relatively good order. They've been able to address our staff comments. They, we do not have any formal open space on this project because in the gateway, if you are under 5 acres or 40,000 square feet, we don't require a formal open space, so there's none on this project. There's some shown, but that's just optional. They were able to revise their plan to meet our Gateway Streetscape Master Plan. Originally, when Cedar Glade Drive was designed, it was designed as a private drive. And upon further reflection, the developer, Charlie Wade, came back and requested it for it to be a public road, mostly so that lots could be created off of the road. And so there's a bit of a shift in what we would normally see in Gateway Streetscape Master Plan. We would see a separation, six-foot separation between the road itself, the sidewalk, street trees. So at this property, they were able to design it to do more of a gradual shift so from how a private road would be designed to the public road. So it looks a little bit different, but I think they've done a good job integrating those public standards to this road with the change. Other than that, they metered parking standards. They were able to put a dumpster in. Initially, they were suggesting that carts would be a sufficient way of managing solid waste, and that's not something that we typically would accept in the gateway. And so they have a smaller dumpster that fits their needs here. So they were able to address our staff comments. Mr. Taylor, do you have anything to add? You don't have anything to add for this project, but if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. We would ask that you make any approvals subject to all staff comments.
Okay. Questions or comments from the planning commission?
There are none. I'll make a motion that we approve subject to all staff comments. Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Next, we have plats and plans. Our first item. Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Next, we have Plats and Plans. Our first item there is the Malloy Property Lot One, master plan and preliminary plat for one lot on 20.12 acres, zoned lot industrial, located along New Salem Highway and Middle Tennessee Boulevard. Newton Malloy is the developer. And Mr. Barbie, hello?
Hello, good afternoon, Chairwoman Jones and members of the planning commission. Bringing to you this afternoon, the master plan and preliminary plat for the Malloy Property Lot One. This is a 20.12 acre parcel located at the intersection of Middle Tennessee Boulevard and New Salem Highway, directly across from Heritage Farms Dairy. It does create one lot of record with the remainder of the property being reserved for future development, and includes one new street, Kill Brandon Drive, as a part of the, the master plan. The plat's in generally good order, and we would ask that any approval be subject to all staff comments.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Barbie?
There are none, I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Barbie. Next, we have Westlong Commercial East Section One Lot One, master plan and preliminary plat for one lot on 2.36 acres, zoned PUD, located along Veterans Parkway and Blackman Road. Oscar Properties LLC is the developer. Mr. Cooper, welcome.
Thank you very much, good afternoon, Chairwoman Jones and members of the planning commission. The item before you, as you mentioned, is the master plan and preliminary plat for the eastern commercial section of the Westlong subdivision. These are consistent with the approved pattern book for this area, with the plat there committing to constructing a portion of the newly realigned Blackman Road, with the rest of the road expected to be construction, constructed with the remainder of the lot. The remaining section of the portion of, north of Lot One is proposed as one lot in the program book, and any further subdivision would require a PUD amendment, and they were originally discussing doing another lot as well, so they, they might be coming back with that PUD amendment in the future. The master plan and preliminary plat approval should be contingent on them addressing any remaining staff comments. I'm available for any questions, and Matt Taylor would be happy to answer any as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cooper. Any questions or comments for Mr. Cooper or Mr. Taylor?
If not, I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And next, we have the Westlong Commercial East Section One Lot One Preliminary Plat for one lot on 2.36 acres, zoned PUD, located along Veterans Parkway and Blackman Road. Oscar Properties LLC, developer. Mr. Cooper?
Thanks again. This is the final plat for the previously discussed Westlong Commercial East Section One Lot One subdivision. The plat is in generally good order, and approval should be contingent upon them addressing any remaining staff comments. This normally would be on consent agenda, it's just that we had the master plan and preliminary plat that we had to present before you, so if you have any questions for me or Matt, we'd be happy to answer.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
There are none, I'll make a motion, we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Cooper. All right, moving on to new business, we have a zoning application for approximately 13.1 acres, located along the north side of West Thompson Lane, to be rezoned from RS-15 to PRD, King's Landing Villas. Black Diamond Development is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. Our first item of new business is a request for you to schedule a public hearing for a rezoning application our staff has received. For property located on the north side of West Thompson Lane, this property is currently located in city limits and is zoned RS-15, that's single-family residential district with a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. You can see the subject area in the purple on the map that I have available on the screen, and it almost looks like a prong or a plug, and because the center of the property is not a part of this application, it's an existing single-family lot, owner occupied, and they were not interested in, in joining the application. We did ask the applicants to see if that would be something they would be interested in, because we thought it would be a good effort to consider the whole area instead of having a little cutout, but the owner wasn't interested in changing at the time, but it's my understanding that the owner of that interior property is the one who's selling the remainder of the property. It, it has been explained to me that they're not unaware of any of the changes and are in favor of it, but of course, our public hearing process will make sure anybody has an opportunity to speak. So although it's quite unusual, maybe a little bit awkward, I did want to speak to that, because it's probably one of the first things you noticed. The properties surrounding this area are zoned RS-15 as well, single-family residential district. To the south is a rather large public institution or a church, and of course, this property has frontage on West Thompson Lane. T-Dot has plans to improve West Thompson Lane, and those plans are already done, and they're currently in their right-of-way acquisition phase, which, of course, I, I can't speak to exactly how much time it will take, but I know that that is something they're actively working on and with, or the, or obtaining the right-of-way that they may need for the improvements to West Thompson Lane. I have included in your materials information about a plan of development, and also information about the future land use map and what recommends for this area. The future land use map does recommend that this area, let me forget the exact terminology here, develop a suburban residential character, and the abbreviation's SR. Let me go ahead and put that up. It's in my comments, there it is. And so the designation of a suburban residential area allows a broad, broad range, range of commercial office, or a broad range of commercial uses, and they're usually large lots. It's supposed to be an area where you can see some transition from our more intense city-type developments to rural areas. They do allow for smaller lots if the plan, the development plan provides options for smaller lots in exchange for greater open space. Mr. Clyde Roundtree is representing the applicant, and I'm going to invite him to lectern in just a moment. I'll give you a few facts about the development, but really allow him an opportunity to present the request for you. The request, of course, is to zone the property PRD, Planned Residential District, and they're calling it King's Landing Villas PRD. As proposed, they would like to allow 42 single-family attached units, and single-family attached is another way of saying townhomes, to 42 townhomes with a minimum lots, or a minimum building size of 1,000 square feet and two stories. They're also proposing to allow 29 single-family detached lots, which are your traditional single-family home on its own lot of record, and those are concentrated on the eastern side of the development, adjacent to the existing North Borough Court subdivision. I think we're probably familiar, all of us familiar with that subdivision. And so staff asked them, when they were looking at laying out this plan, they wanted to have townhomes in small lots, and we asked for them to put the townhomes on the opposite side of the existing city subdivision as a way to help mitigate or transition from those rather large lots to this proposed development, so they've been able to do that. We are still working with the design team on some of the nuances of the plans, but it was ready to come to you for you to consider scheduling a public hearing. We would recommend November 4th as a public hearing date, if you are comfortable moving forward. Of course, you, you can push that out if you would like some additional information after you hear from Mr. Roundtree and hear his presentation. Although, at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Roundtree to lectern and let him go through the nuances of the plan. If you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them.
Ms. Green, welcome, Ms. Green.
Chairman Jones, commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundtree, Huddleston Steel Engineering. Thank you for the opportunity to kind of elaborate a little bit on the plan for King's Landing Villas. I'm here with Mr. Randy Fritz, who's the developer on the project, Mr. Brian Oliver, the architect, is here as well, and Mr. Bill Huddleston and Enick Gerald, engineers from Huddleston Steel. As Margaret Ann mentioned, we are proposing 71 units on 13 acres, so it puts us around a density of a little over five units per acre. Mr. Fritz, on the initiation of this project, met with the planning staff, he, he just wanted to make sure that the density was going to be something that was going to be palatable with all the new concerns over sewer allocations, so he reached out to Valerie very much on the front end of this project to make sure that, that we were capable of handling it from a sanitation considerations, sewer considerations. So that's the first thing he did. The second thing was, he wanted to make sure that the overall density was something that was somewhat consistent with what we see along that development. So as Margaret Ann mentioned, it is a suburban residential, as far as the 2035 plan, the land use plan, so we were kind of bucking great against that a little bit, so we're going to work through that in the pattern book to make sure we explain why. We're using as our justification right now that Tuscan and E right down the street, as well as General's Landing, are both projects that are very consistent with what we're proposing. So just to kind of know, there's some history on North Thompson Lane that we're kind of responding to. As Margaret Ann mentioned, all the single-family homes are justified to the east. We did meet with the North Borough subdivision, they were very concerned when we did General's Landing over drainage. So prior to submittal of our application, we had to have a neighborhood meeting with those folks, and we had it over at a park over by the airport, and we were able to discuss their concerns, and they do have concerns over drainage. What we did at General's Landing will be consistent with what we plan on doing here, is to do our best to alleviate any concerns they may have by allowing us to, we are proposing a drainage easement along the western side of this property that'll allow it to drain, that can pick up any, any flow off of their property. Mr. Gerald can elaborate on that a little bit more, but we, we committed to them that we would take spot elevations on their particular site, and if there's something we could do to help their, what are move, in a more appropriate fashion, we'd do our best to accommodate that concern. The issue we're having is along that property line, is a well-established tree line on the eastern property line, and so it's a little catch-22, do you want your trees or you want your drainage cut? So we're kind of in the middle of that conversation. I think as they show up to the public hearing, we, we definitely reached out to them, they do have a point person that we're communicating with, and we have committed to do our best to alleviate their concerns. And General's Landing was successful in that regard, several of the neighbors took advantage of having swales cut from their backyard into the General Landing swale to kind of take away some of their drainage issues. There are two entry points off of North Thompson Lane. One thing we're working through with the staff is, is we have some roundabouts that we're proposing for, basically for dampening speed along the, the main roads into the subdivision, so we're, we're going through that process to understand how best to handle that. As Margaret Ann mentioned, there's been a lot of critique on the architecture, just refinement, and Mr. Oliver has worked towards that end. So with that in mind, we feel like we're got an appropriate use for the location, and we're excited about operating, you know, this to the neighborhood and the Murfreesboro community. And as we're seeing, there is a trend towards smaller lots across the board and attached homes. Margaret Ann mentioned there's 42 attached, and there's 26 three-bedroom, 16 two-bedroom, so it's a combination mix, and we're still in the world of trying to make sure there's affordable places to live in Murfreesboro, so this project would definitely fit along those lines. So with that in mind, I'm available for any questions you may have. If you have any questions about architecture or engineering, we've got support here for that as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Questions for Mr. Roundtree?
So with respects to the parcel that is not being contemplated, is, is he just going to live there, or, I mean?
Mr. Halliburton, what's happened there is, Randy's reached out to the, the owner multiple times. There's a complicated situation there, is a, a young lady with, well, she's not young, but she's a daughter of the owner who has special needs, and the owner of the property understands that it'll be a little bit complicated, have some development around them. However, they don't want to change the circumstances for, for a daughter in that situation. Obviously, Mr. Fritz would like to have first rights whenever the time comes. We've actually kind of master-planned over that parcel to make sure that when it comes online, we kind of know how to handle that. Staff has seen at least a, you know, an early version of how that would lay out. Most likely, the single-family on the eastern side would just continue on the one side of that, that lot, and then on the other side, the townhomes would come down. But he's done everything, and, and it's a little bit of a detachment. The, her kind of communicating source for the family are not interested in really working with the situation, they're just kind of want to let it lay. So as a result of that situation, we did propose a type A buffer just to create some separation whenever the construction, you know, is underway, so we can create some sort of buffer initially. That's, you know, eventually that'll probably be taken out, that, that tree line that we have to put in. But he's reached out, and Randy's been really good about reaching out to the, the present owners to try to see if he can meet their needs or what their concerns are, and this situation is, it's unique to my experience, I really haven't been to one where it's a special needs situation, the family just doesn't want to disrupt the flow of that.
Mr. Roundtree, are those, like modular units in the back of that currently on that property, or is it like barns? Do you know?
They're trailers currently, I think there's what, six for Randy or so?
I think there's three or four left back there now.
Yeah, they, they're going to be removed upon, as soon as we initiate. Are there any leases on those, Randy, or any rental agreements? Yeah, those will be removed, which would be a nice, a nice thing, you can still see them from North Thompson.
I would just question from the city standpoint and the services, and especially emergency services up and down Thompson Lane, even if there's not going to be development on this interior parcel, oh, it's all, all of this is all already in the city, we're just zoning, right? All of the purple and the interior lot is inside the city?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We've got a lot of lot lines going, I mean.
Yeah, I know.
City, going along here, I was like, okay, are we leaving that out? Okay.
No lease lines.
No lease lines. Good.
TVA easement, no lease line, we're, we're in good shape.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not often a planner can use a term that a expert title person doesn't know. You made me question myself when.
Old expert.
But the entire property is currently in the city limits. For quite some time, it was just several feet along the north side of Thompson Lane, but I think about 10 years ago, the city took action to honor own volition to annex the remainder of the property. And I remember doing some research regarding the amount of 911 calls that came from the mobile homes, or I think more than we typically see in some other developments, so I do recall, recall that annexation. The property directly to the north is not in the city, it's.
Okay.
But just north of that is the, the, the city's farm, okay, so this lot. The only parcel that is not in the city is this one, and then these two. So there's a gap between city limits here and city limits here with that one parcel.
Mm-hmm.
If that helps at all. And this is city-owned property, that's RS-15, it's where we spray our, our treated water. And this, Mr. Roundtree's right about the drainage, we had a neighborhood meeting, and I was there, and of course, it was something that was discussed in depth. It's important to the residents, it's important to us. And if you look at the ortho photos, you can see that this property has water that just sits on it for extended periods of time. And so the North Borough Court residents, of course, didn't want that water just being redirected, and so our commitment to them was that our stormwater regulations would require that this property to continue to receive, retain, and release the water at the same rate it does today. Something different about the west side of North Borough Court as opposed to the east side of North Borough Court, because I think you will hear that not all the residents on the east side of North Borough Court were completely satisfied with the ditch that was put in, although it did improve the situation. There's no drainage easement along the back of these lots, so we couldn't, the city couldn't go in, our developer couldn't go in and put any infrastructure in that would take any kind of rainwater into their system. The homeowners required to do that improvement themselves. On this side of North Borough Court, there's actually a 20-foot drainage easement that runs along the back of these properties. There is, Mr. Roundtree suggested there are some trees there, some may be good, some may be what I affectionately term trash trees or hackberries, that the good of improving the drainage is more important than keeping an old hackberry that's half-dead anyway. And I'm a little bitter about paying $2,000 to remove a hackberry in my backyard, so you might be able to tell that. And so there may be some things that this developer can do for the North Borough Court that they couldn't do on the opposite side, because there's a drainage easement. It is recorded, it's part of the subdivision plan when North Borough Court was initially constructed in the 80s. I think the standards the city had were different. Also, I don't think that the infrastructure was put in like it should have been, and so I'm not sure if there's just water in the yard or if it actually is affecting structures. Of course, we have different levels of reaction to water. Water being in your yard is an emergency, it's a natural phenomenon, but water in your HVAC or in your house or your basement is, is really important, and so that's something that we would want to do something about. that we would want to do something about immediately. We have from the neighbor received some testimony about water there, and we're continuing to look at it, and part of what, I want to meet with Mr. Roundtree, and his team at Huddleston Steel, is to see what we can do to maybe not only keep the situation as it is, but possibly improve it. So oftentimes, when we look at zoning, we say, what is the benefit to the community overall, not just to creating more houses or lots, but what's the community gaining by this zoning change? And I think this is an opportunity to improve the quality of life for people who are already here, and if that's the case, that, of course, will be something that we would be in support of. So I think our continued discussion will include a significant amount of time talking about drainage.
Thank you.
If I could add one thing to that, too, based on what we've kind of, because we have a little traction with General's Landing, a lot of the drainage is coming from the north, and it's coming off of the city's property, which is really where they, I guess they discharge a lot of the reclaimed water, and we don't know if there's any solution that could happen on the city property as far as detaining that water, slowing it down, but it seems like, because they're really trying to ask us to solve the problem that's coming from the north, and we're, as Margaret Ann has mentioned, we're looking to do anything we can within our site, you know, to adjacent North Borough property, but a lot of it seems like it's migrating down. So with that in mind, there may be a bigger scheme we can get into.
I must interrupt, Mr. Roundtree, based on conversations I've had with Development Services Director and our, the many engineers we have on staff. I believe there's a perception that all the water is coming from the city-owned property. I don't think it's necessarily true. Some of it was water that was coming from there because there's natural drainage before the city ever owned the property, it was coming, but now that we own it, I think it's, looks like an easy scapegoat, and I've been asked to, if this statement was made, to go ahead and say to you that maybe that's not a clear picture, 100% clear picture, and I would ask you to wait to make any of those statements till we do have a more full picture. I don't think the water problem is completely, our engineers don't think it's from the city spraying that water. It may be that the fact that there's a large mass of land that has water, and before the city ever owned it, water came off of it, but I did want to kind of stop Mr. Roundtree from talking, and maybe in the future, we can hear from Mr. Huddleston, who can explain it much better than I can.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
We're looking into it.
All right. Okay, so we don't have other major questions and concerns. We are looking to schedule a public hearing.
We've set the public hearing for November 4th.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you all very much. Next, we have a zoning application for approximately 10.7 acres located at the northeast corner of New Salem Highway and Warrior Drive to be rezoned from RS-15 to CH. Investment Partners, Inc. is the applicant, and Mr. Blomley is going to take this one today. Mr. Blomley?
Sure. There's a mass exit, it's when I get up here.
Yes, yeah. They want her to get out of here.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission, and welcome to Mr. Wright, to your first Planning Commission meeting. Our next item under new business is a rezoning request for property that's located at the northeast corner of the intersection of New Salem Highway and Warrior Drive. It's the Yori property. It's zoned RS-15. There's a single-family home on it. It's the area colored in blue on the map before you. As you know, over the last five or 10 years, there's been quite a bit of construction activity going on at this intersection. I think we're finally seeing the maturity of this interchange and the development is finally moving forward around it as the roadway construction of New Salem Highway is underway. Directly across New Salem Highway, there's the new racetrack and the U-Haul. Across Warrior Drive, there's the Speedway that was constructed six or seven years ago and the Dunkin' Donuts, the car wash, there's a retail center and an apartment complex. This property is currently zoned RS-15. It's really the only property that you'll notice in the vicinity that's zoned, single-family residential, and the property to the east is zoned commercial highway. We've seen a site plan for a self-service storage facility located on that property. Directly to the north is the on-ramp for the interstate. Across the street is zoned commercial highway, across Warrior Drive and across New Salem Highway is zoned light industrial. So it seems odd that this particular property is zoned RS-15 and everything else on that, at the intersection of Warrior and New Salem Highway, is zoned neither commercial or industrial. Aha, there is a little bit of history to that. Those of you, and I'm looking at Ms. Jones and Mr. Halliburton, who have been on the Planning Commission a long time, you may remember that when we... Mr. Halliburton, I believe you've been on there 14 years, so I had to include you on that, because I think you were.
You can count better than I can.
You were on the Planning Commission, I believe, back around probably 2010, 2011, when we studied the property in the area to zone it to commercial highway, and the property across the street was zoned commercial highway, the property to the east was zoned commercial highway. We included the Yori property as additional study area. Staff included that area as additional study area. The Yori family actually came, I believe, to the public hearing, and I'm looking to Ms. Green, because she's been here almost as long as I have, and I think that they actually asked that it be removed from the request, and so it stayed zoned RS-15. Now they're, now they are looking to sell the property, and Mr. Matt Taylor with SEC has submitted a request to rezone it to commercial highway, consistent with what's across Warrior Drive and what is to the east along Warrior Drive. And I'm not sure if Investment Partners has purchased the property or if they have it under contract.
They have it under contract.
They have it under contract. Of course, commercial highway, there are numerous uses that could be developed under the commercial highway zone. They've submitted to us a concept plan, and we generally don't provide you with concept plans when there's a rezoning request to a bulk zoning, because we don't want to muddy the waters about what they're asking, because the commercial highway zone would entitle them to develop numerous uses other than what might be shown in that concept plan. But I will mention to you that I believe it's their intent to develop a commercial site that would include a gas station/convenience market, as well as several restaurant uses at that, on that property. So that's their intent, should they have the property rezoned. Of course, as I mentioned with bulk zoning, there's nothing to hold them to that intent, but I thought it would be worth mentioning what they have indicated to us that they want to do. The property is shown on the future land use map of the Murfreesboro 2035 Plan. That general commercial is the most appropriate land use designate, or land use character for the property. The commercial highway zone fits within that general commercial recommendation of the comprehensive plan. So this request is consistent with the Murfreesboro 2035 comprehensive plan. Be happy to answer any questions regarding this application. Mr. Matt Taylor is here as well, as is Mr. John Harney, also involved in the application. We would recommend that you schedule a public hearing for this request for November the 4th. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Blomley?
I'll move that we set a public hearing for November 4th.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Appreciate it. And next, we have a zoning application for the PS planned signage overlay district zoning for Costco wholesale for approximately 20.2 acres located along Beezy Road and Warrior Drive. Costco Corporation is the applicant. Ms. Stevens, welcome.
Good afternoon. You are going to get tired of seeing me with all these planned sign overlays.
All right, it's good stuff.
So the subject property is located at 1524 Beezy Road, 1512 Beezy Road, and 1536 Beezy Road, along Beezy Road and Warrior Drive. The property consists of approximately 20.2 acres, and the property is zoned light industrial. The purpose of the planned sign overlay is to allow the applicant an opportunity to present a cohesive plan for an entire project that addresses everything from permanent building signage to temporary signs. The proposed planned sign overlay would allow larger and additional attached signs that allowed by the existing sign ordinance. I provided a table to give information as it pertains to the current sign ordinance, as well as the signage proposed in the planned sign overlay. And you also were provided a copy of the master plan as attached. You can see there are some significant differences in sizes, but considering the size of the building, I think they're reasonable to request the number of signs and the square feet of signs that they're asking for. There are no proposed ground signs or freestanding wall signs for this property, and staff has continued to work with the applicant on convenience signs, the enter-and-exit signs as well as the temporary signs, so I didn't include the differences between our sign ordinance and those. We have joining with us via Zoom is Steve Warfield, Marta Kopinski, and Eric Brom from Costco, and they'll be glad to answer any questions Commissioners may have. We're requesting a public hearing be set on this matter.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Have any questions in regard to this PS overlay for Costco?
I have a quick question. We recently passed something that limited the sign, the size of signs or temporary signs? Just, I want to know for formality, because they have a temporary sign in the PSO package, does that override?
It will. It'll, and that would be the same with any temporary signs in any of our PSOs. They'll still be, if we approved the PSO 10 years ago, that'll still be what they're... A lot of our PSOs refer to the sign ordinance, so for those, it will change with it, but if it's independent of our sign ordinance, it'll stay the same.
Okay, I want to make sure.
Thank you, Ms. Garland. Any other questions? And November 4th, are we good for that?
Is that good, Ms. Ives?
Yes.
I'll move that we set a public hearing for November 4th.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, November 4th. Okay, that concludes our new business, and we next have staff reports and other business. Oh, thought we didn't have any, but I saw a hand go up over here, Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of reminders, as Mr. McKnight has let you all know, we have a few Planning Commission workshop meetings coming up, the first of which will be this coming Monday, the 26th, at 1:00 PM, or excuse me, 2:00 PM, and the next one will be Monday, November the 2nd, at 2:00 PM, and the final one will be Monday, November the 9th, at 2:00 PM. And we're going to cover a variety of topics, and we look forward to those workshops. And those will all be here in the council chambers, and they've been advertised as public meetings in the Murfreesboro Post to meet our, to meet our open meetings requirements, and so obviously, we're not being televised right now, but if we were, I would let the public know that they are public meetings and they're welcome to attend. The other thing that I wanted to remind you all, you're probably getting sick of me emailing you about the training that we have coming up, it's on November the 13th. Ms. Jacob has been so kind as to register all Planning Commission members, Board of Zoning Appeals members and staff for this free training opportunity. It's TAPA, just to plug TAPA. TAPA is our state chapter of the American Planning Association, the Tennessee chapter of the American Planning Association. They recognize the limitations of in-person training sessions right now, and so they are attempting to fill that void, knowing that there is state mandated continuing education requirements for planning support staff, Planning Commission members, and Board of Zoning Appeals members, so they're providing us this free opportunity. I think it meets that intent of trying to knock out our training requirements, but I think we've also got a couple of really good speakers, and I think that it'll be a great opportunity for all of us. So, and as I mentioned in the email, it's, it will be held virtually live on Friday morning, the 13th of November, from 8:00 to noon. You can, you can attend virtually at your, at your home office or your office office, and, but if you can't watch it during that time, it will be posted subsequently on TAPA's website, and I'll provide you all a link to that. Anybody who would need that link, I'll provide you all a link to that. So we hope you all can, you all can take part in that, and that's all I have, Ms. Jones.
Green?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Nothing, okay. Anybody else? All right, thank you very much, and we do stand to adjourn.